Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. These things are working well tonight. Hope everyone can hear okay. Thanks for braving the cold and being here for our work session. Our ambition this evening, as we call the meeting to order, is to review and discuss the staff analysis of the Spotswood site development proposals. We have the three from Lexington Collaborative and one with Echelon. And I will remind everyone, our ambition is to not be in a hurry. We want to ask all the questions and look at all these and give them the due review. And staff is obviously available here, and I think they're members of the collaborative to address any questions that council may have, but this is an opportunity for council to have discussion and review of these proposals. With that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Take the mask off, talking for some period of time. As the mayor said, there were four proposals received, one from the Echelon Resources Group and three from the Spotswood Collaborative. And I want to move through these, you know, at a reasonable pace, but stop me anytime you have any questions, please. So, the members of the Spotswood Collaborative, if you don't recall, are Max Ivankoff, Lee Merrill, Arthur Bartonstein, Heidi and Bruce Schweitzer, Russ Orson and Ben Grigsby. And of course, Mr. Edwin Gaskin and Mr. Randy Cosby have been with us before representing the Echelon Resources folks. Neither of them will be here tonight, so just FYI. And first to start with, these are concept plans, these are not site plans. So they're not supposed to indicate compliance with zoning, and they're not going to indicate any engineering done for these particular plans. So if you're -- we're not trying to get down into those details or the weeds of those types of things this evening. If a proposal should be evaluated and considered for advancement in the process, we might then want to get more information from the proposers and actually start discussing those details. The collaborative proposals range from single-family homes to townhomes and attached condominiums. So they sort of cover the whole range of housing types that we could see in the community, do see in the community, and we could see on that parcel. So we have, the first one is the collaborative Concept A, which is the densest proposal that they have provided. It consists of 48 condominiums, four buildings, and the estimated sale price is thought to be from the low, upper $200,000 range to the low to the upper $2,000 range. The date of acceptance to completion is estimated to be 48 months for construction. The purchase price for the parcel is stated at $450,000. A stormwater detention facility is planned. It cannot be determined if proposed parking is adequate in this proposal. Again, that's a zoning issue, but in order for us to calculate that, we do need the number of bedrooms in a proposed proposal such as this, and they did not require or provide that information at this time. Additional traffic volume for the proposal is estimated to be 336 trips per day. And this proposal would require a conditional use permit or rezoning to multifamily designation if it was to move forward. The proposal does not meet the required frontage of 490 feet for the number of units proposed. I will say that that is true of the Echelon proposal as well, and that's sort of a flaw in our zoning ordinance. Our zoning ordinance requires a certain amount of frontage on the highway or the road for every apartment that you have. It's really not required. Arnie said it's just been there forever and never changed. Obviously, there are many instances where you'd rather have the, at least in my view, have the apartment building set back well off the road and maybe have something in front of it. You wouldn't want or need frontage along the street, hundreds of foot of frontage taken up by an apartment building. But that's what our ordinance requires at this time. If we should want to move forward with either of those proposals, we'll need to change that ordinance, need to address it. The height and setback requirements appear to be met. The proposal does not state if a rezoning to multiple family or planned unit development will be sought, and one of those will again have to be done, it just doesn't state it at this point in time. No examples of previous projects was included in this submittal. Any questions on Concept A from the collaborative?
Just to affirm what I think I heard you say is that the 48 condominiums, they would be sold, the estimated sales price is thought to be from low to upper $200,000?
Yes.
But the purchase price for the parcel would be $450?
Correct.
So the condominiums would sell for low to upper $200,000?
Correct.
Got it.
That's the estimate, of course, I believe, without being completely, I mean, I just, my memory says it's based on market, and that's why you have the ranges there, of course.
Right.
Okay, collaborative.
I just will note, you know, you mentioned that there were no other projects listed, comparable projects, and Max and Heidi did later submit a list of projects they've done, some that included multifamily apartments.
He may later do that, is what you asked?
He did. I mean, we received an email later.
Two o'clock today.
Right, right.
Yeah. Yeah. Concept B is proposed to be attached residential townhomes. Twenty attached townhomes are proposed on the site. The estimated sale price is from the mid $300,000 to the mid $400,000 range, and from the date of acceptance to completion is estimated to be a 48-month process. The purchase price for the parcels is stated at $325,000. Again, a stormwater detention facility is planned. Proposed parking is adequate. Additional traffic volume for the proposal is estimated to be 140 trips per day. The proposal is a by right use in our code and requires no additional zoning action. The proposal does meet lot size, excuse me, does meet lot size. A townhome development is required to front on or be accessed by a public street, and this requirement is not met. I spoke with Arnie about that and the fire chief, and primarily that's to make sure you can get fire rescue vehicles into the project, if you are the development. If you have eight, 10, 20 townhomes and you can't get within 100 or 200 feet, sometimes that's a problem, if you can't get those big vehicles in there. So that has been the requirement in the past. I think if we move forward with this one, we'll probably have to make sure that, since there is no street there, that they will make sure that there's adequate space to maneuver a vehicle in the drive lanes. So we'll have to check that later. Questions on Proposal B or Concept B? Concept C is proposed to be 13 single-family homes within a village concept. The estimated sale price is from the mid $400,000 to the mid $500,000 range, and from the date of acceptance to completion is estimated to be 42 months. The purchase price for the parcel is stated at $250,000. Little twist, it's very unique, and I think a nice option is a playground is proposed above the underground stormwater detention facility, and proposed parking does appear adequate. Additional traffic volume for the proposal is estimated to be 130 trips per day. The proposed use is by right in our code and requires no additional zoning action. The required minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet, and in this case, only 3,600 square feet are available for each home or each site. Again, this is a zoning issue, and we'll have to go over later. The current lot width is proposed to be 40 feet, not the 60 that's required, and it does not appear the 10-foot side yard setback is met. Now, obviously, you know, I think the observation is they're squeezing as many houses perhaps as they can into the project, and they don't have the square footage for the lot size, and they don't meet the setbacks. So that'll just have to be an item of, you know, discussion in the future if this proposal is something that we want to pursue, US City Council members want to pursue. A plant's unit development is proposed for the site, but the acreage is below the minimum acreage required for a PUD, so it's not really eligible for a PUD unless we were to go back and revise the PUD ordinance as well. Thoughts, questions on Concept C?
Is Concept C somewhat similar to the Weatherburn project that is in the city already? It's a larger project, but...
Well, I gather, I didn't go out or ask Arnie about the size of the lots and the setbacks, but assuming that has been met, so they're larger lots, of course, and perhaps larger homes than sitting on those lots. I don't know that for sure, the square footage of those homes.
Okay. I think it was done as a PUD, so it may be small.
Okay.
Because of that, it may be very similar in size and scope, but it's, conceptually, this plan is similar to Weatherburn in the village concept with single-family homes, not attached.
Yeah, they're not attached, and they're certainly single-family, so.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Other thoughts? None. Okay. The Echelon Resources proposal consists of a single three-to-four-story structure with 62 loft-style apartments with an anticipated mix of 70% one-bedroom and 30% two-bedroom units. Rental rates are projected to be between $1,200 to $1,400 per month for a one-bedroom unit and $1,600 to $1,900 a month for a two-bedroom unit. From the date of acceptance to completion, it is estimated to be 48 months or less. Purchase price for the parcel is stated at $350,000. A stormwater detention facility is planned. Proposed parking is adequate. Additional traffic volume for the proposal is estimated to be 337 trips per day. This proposed use would require a conditional use permit or rezoning to our multiple family designation, and in the application, they indicate they would go for a, or like to have a conditional use permit granted, if you will. The proposal does not meet the required frontage of 630 feet for the number of units proposed, as I stated additionally or earlier for the Concept A of the collaborative proposal, same issue there. Setbacks are met, and with the proposed additional side yard setback, the height requirement appears to be met. The parking requirement appears to be met based upon the number of bedrooms within the development, and several examples of similar projects were noted. Questions on that concept? Just noted that a draft contract was provided by both proposers, and I didn't ask the attorney to review that yet because there's really no need to go into detail until we get down to brass tacks with one or another of those. So I'll have him review that soon, but at this point in time, I didn't think that was necessary. Looking at cost-benefit analysis, we saw that on the previous project that, or projects that Echelon had proposed about this time last year. And basically, looking at some of the data that was provided by the proposers and some of the assumptions that we had to make as staff, we provided a CBA, and you'll see them on the large sheets in front of you. And I apologize if you tried to look at the small sheets that were sent electronically, it's much smaller, and these aren't maybe a lot better, but it's the best we could do at this point as far as size goes. And I will say that these CBAs are an estimate, of course, based upon the data presented in our assumptions. And the purpose of these CBAs is to provide a measure for comparing the rough financial benefit to the city of the different concepts. I wouldn't want us to think, or anyone to think, that the numbers provided should be quoted as exact numbers. That's not the case, of course. It shows a scale of what we expect with regard to some financial return. And I'll let our finance director explain some of the concepts and assumptions that she used when making these CBAs for us. Jen? I guess so, probably.
Good evening. Thank you. So, as the city manager said, we're very early in the process. I had to make a lot of assumptions. This is just a working draft that we'll refine as we go. But I also tried to keep the assumptions as consistent as possible, or at least my way of thinking, so that we could get a fair comparison of how the projects look. So, a couple of things that I assumed were, for example, the occupancy. And so, in my opinion, you know, I did look at the Lexington census information that said the average household is 2.02 people. So, understanding the proposals, I thought it was fair to assume that Spotswood Collaborative Proposal A, which is the condos, and the Echelon Proposal, that's the apartments, we could assume maybe 1.25 occupants per unit. And that's able to allow us to better understand what the personal property taxes would be and also the, well, the meals, all the taxes really, because we're basing it on a per person, and in addition, the water usage. Then for the single-family homes as well as the townhomes, I just went ahead and assumed two occupants per dwelling. Another assumption that was made in speaking with Jeff Martone at Public Works is that the water and sewer usage is approximately 100 gallons per day per person, and that's based on what the Virginia Department of Health requires them to use when doing their modeling. Oh, and another important assumption to know is just the rate at which the units would be filled. And so I wanted to err on the side of being conservative, so I assumed one-third of the available units filled per year that they're available. And hopefully, that would be more. We know the needs out there, but again, just to be conservative. I think the last point I would like to make is that in regard to the real estate tax, as I mentioned to you all in an email earlier this week, the Commissioner of the Revenue is currently undergoing a reassessment of all property values, so our beginning price, our beginning assessed value may change a little, but I believe in the grand scheme of things, when we're talking about returning the millions of dollars, a few thousand one way or another, probably won't make that much of a difference. Any questions? Okay. I'm also happy to go through each one, if that's preferable, if you just want to digest it on your own. Like I said, it's preliminary, so.
I would say if you don't mind going through each one.
Sure.
Be grateful.
Great. Okay, so starting with the first Spotswood Collaborative Proposal A, that's the 48 condos, and assuming 1.25 occupants per condo, we would have 60 occupants. And under this scenario, we were actually told that it's within the first, I want to say, it was 24 months after closing, they would be able to have the first building ready for us. So in that instance, starting in year three, we were able to have one-third of the units rented, again, just an assumption, but that would start bringing revenues into the city starting as early as year three. In the instance of this option A, because they are proposing four separate buildings, we can start to bring on units much earlier than in some of the other proposals. So as we go through and look at our assumptions here for the cost to the city, and I apologize, I want to go back one moment. One other, just real quick assumption that I made is really, it's the same for all four proposals, because all of the proposals requested that the city provide an ALTA survey at our cost. So you'll see in the first-year cost that, you know, that's the same cost, no matter which proposal we pick. Likewise, one that will change, but for right now is the same, is the waived connection fees for the utilities. That'll vary fairly largely between the different scenarios, based on my conversations with Jeff Martone, but as I stated before, a few thousand one way or another in a several-million-dollar project, it doesn't make that big of a difference, so I felt pretty comfortable keeping that the same for all four proposals at this stage. So, sorry. Now, back to where we are. So, going through and looking at Proposal A, bringing the units on early, I have an escalation factor of 3% for the MSA for both sewer and water each year. And I also assumed that the real estate assessment each year, not each year, every four years when it's done, would increase values by 3%. So when we go through and we look through the proposal over a 20-year period, I estimate the return to the city to be just over $3.1 million. So moving on to Proposal B, this is the 20 townhouses, where I assumed two occupants per house for a total, no, I didn't. I assumed 2.5, and that's how I came up with the 50. And again, some of the same assumptions here. I guess what we changed was the occupancy factor, of course, the number of units. And in this one, it just, it wasn't clear on the proposals, but given that they're townhomes, I would think it might be possible to have some units ready before the entire project is done. So if that's the case, we could potentially shift some of these benefits up into year three, not waiting until year four to start to see those. But going through, adding on one-third of the available units each year and looking out for the next 20 years, I estimate the value to the city to be just over 2.2 million.
Jen, going backwards for a second on A.
A.
You were anticipating, was it 1.25 occupants?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And 2.5 for...
Correct.
Yes.
Originally, I said two, but that was mistaken. All right. On to Proposal C. This is the 13 single-family homes, and again, as in the townhomes, I did use an occupancy rate of 2.5, so this would be approximately 33 occupants. In this here, I did assume some units would come online, some houses, starting in year three, and we would start to be able to rent those. So down in the assumptions, you can see in year three, I'm expecting we could possibly sell two homes, then six, 10, and the whole 13 over the next three years. Going through, looking at those based on the occupancy, after 20 years, I'm assuming the value to the city would be 1.6 million. Lastly is the Echelon proposal, which again is the 62 apartments. Assuming a 1.25 occupancy, we'd have 78 occupants. This is a standalone building, so it's my assumption that we wouldn't be able to rent any units or start to have people move in until the entire building was finished. In subsequent conversations with the folks at Echelon, they said that they could have, they could safely commit to having the full building built within 24 months after closing. So that still includes the first one full year, 12 months of due diligence that all of the proposals have requested, and then they would have all of their units online in year four. But again, to be conservative, I'm just assuming one-third would be rented per year until year seven, when we reach full occupancy. Looking through this over the next 20 years, I estimate that the value to the city would be just over 3 million. Any questions?
So do any of the cost, just to clarify, it doesn't appear any of the cost-benefit analysis that are for projects where the units are sold take into account the taxes that the city might receive in the real estate transaction?
Correct. That is not included.
So if...
That's a good point.
There are 10 units that are selling every four years, every five years for $400,000. The city is getting a lot of money on the sale of each of those units, right?
That's a great point, and I'll add that in to the three that have sales.
I mean, I don't know how fast we can assume they turn over, but they're going to sell the first year. And one of the developers, Max, I think Weatherburn has 42 units, duplexes and single-family homes, and we know they turn over very quickly. I mean, they're, they seem to constantly couple for sale, and so the city is making money off of that. And then I guess I have a question, and I don't know if anyone in this room can answer it, but I'm sure maybe our Commissioner of the Revenue. But in her experience, if people that are renting in the city of Lexington register their car in the city of Lexington, and what percentage? Because as I drive down Main Street and I drive other areas where people that rent, I see a lot of license plates that are not Virginia, because they're only here for two or three years, maybe while they're a student. Or they have a home in Florida and they keep their cars registered there, or they're renting because they work at VMI and they're in the military, or they're a veteran, or, but anyway, folks that rent don't seem to register their cars at the same level as people that buy a house and register their cars. So I don't know if it's personally realistic to believe that $17,000, you know, and then up to $35,000, $52,000 a year would be glossed from the rental units, if those are people that are renting them. It's just my thought, and I think Karen Roundy could probably tell me if I'm completely wrong, but...
I did ask Karen about that quickly, and she didn't go into great detail. However, she said that renters are required, and so as it comes to her attention, she gets on them, but I don't know otherwise how strictly it's enforced.
Though if you start going down that path, you kind of get in the problem with the condos, with it being a second home, and then, I don't know, I think you have to start making too many assumptions, and so they won't have anything registered here. But I don't know that you want to start going down that path of who's buying this as a second property versus first property, at least when it comes to the cost-benefit analysis. I mean, that's not the only thing we're going to weigh our options on. I mean, we need to look at what type of housing we need and is the best fit for that space.
Right, but it's just, since we've all lived here for decades, we might as well draw on the experience that we have to know that we've got 1,500 residents of the city of Lexington that are students, you know, I mean, whether they're WNL, VMI, or law students, they're renters, and none of their cars are registered in the city of Lexington. So I just feel like we ought to at least acknowledge that. And you're right, what you're saying, but you could also say that people that are, you know, buying a house for $500,000, that their car might be worth more than somewhere. It's hard to, we're making assumptions.
Well, and just know that the students who aren't going to pay, they're already here, and that number's not changing. It may switch from where they live, but the overall number's not going to increase because we have more houses.
And if their first home is in New York, they're probably going to register it in Virginia and will get the property tax. So it's all a matter, this, I appreciate the assumptions that are made here. And David, can you remind me, what does the city get from a tax for the transaction with real estate?
Our, the stamps, and then there's, in the courthouse...
Recording taxes.
Yeah, the recording tax. I mean, I have to, but I can tell you.
I know that those are collected, but I thought those were more a county tax or what, I'm not sure if the city received those. Those were more perfunctory tax at the courthouse.
Maybe you're correct. I thought that it was in our annual budget how much that we received in recording taxes, because the city of Lexington has a different tax rate than the county of Rockbridge for real estate transactions.
Being a multi-property owner, you would know, because you've owned in the county and the city. I didn't, wasn't aware of that. Okay. Very good. What other questions or... Luz, if you could revisit the idea that you mentioned again, the premise that the assumptions are consistent, so it's helpful as a tool to look at, but a bigger question, looking at the overall, as we discern these proposals, is what are the objectives of the city? Not just the financial impact, but the overall, looking at the offering and the inventory that would be brought with each project.
Right. I totally agree with that and believe, you know, we're looking at a unique two-acre parcel. It's a small parcel. I think all four of these proposals are great, and hopefully, we have locations in the city for each of these, but I think we need to look at what is best for this parcel. And I will say, I am a bit concerned with, like, on the proposal for the condos. I like the idea of having apartments, because I think, we know we have a need for that. We've done a housing study, shows we have a need. We have a need for all types of housing. I do worry with the trend we see everywhere in Lexington, if we do condominiums, that they get bought up as a second home, and so they're used part-time by the residents and then used for short-term rentals, and while that may help us from, you know, will we receive some kind of taxes benefit from that, it's not meeting our housing demand. So for a future question, I'd be, I assume there's no change, that those will stay as condos, but I think we need to look at that as a council, what type of housing we want.
Again, our purpose this evening is to have discussion, look at these proposals as we as we work towards, this is a work session to spread all on the table, discuss concerns, questions, ambitions. And at a later time, to, in an open session, to have a public hearing and also have additional discussion and make a selection for, of the proposals. Leslie?
Jim, I had a question. Did either of the groups mention to you right now that that parcel is not flat? And there's on the end closest to the Piovano Building, there's a hill that I assume, was that filled dirt at one point? And do these proposals, do they plan to level that? Do they all plan to level that area, or make use of the topography as it is?
Again, I don't have the details as to what a grading plan might look like on the site. Obviously, there's going to be some leveling required for parking, the building footprints themselves, or the building lots. Also, there'll be some grading for the stormwater detention basin as well. So, no, we did not get into that detail. It was not mentioned in the proposals.
Council's suspiciously quiet this evening. But that's okay.
I've got more material, if you want me to proceed, Mr. Mayor.
With the proposals?
Yeah, yeah, a little bit more information. We already saw, of course, as the finance director noted, what these proposals could bring in for revenues. I will say, of course, that again, we're talking about a measure of values here. And what we have seen, of course, initially, is that the Concept A and Echelon proposal are very close, relatively speaking, value. And then the other concepts, B and C, have much less value because of the type of project that they are. And as you mentioned and anticipated, Councilors, John, this is basically just one element that we should be looking at when we look at this as financial returns, but there are several others. And what I'd like to mention, the other criteria, is that we have, as you said, the needs this community has for different housing types. Which one of these proposals satisfy that need the most? And that should be something I would recommend you look at. The other one is that the quality of the development itself. If you're looking at two developments that are alike, which is going to have the highest quality of both the project on-site itself and also have the greatest impacts on the neighborhood from an aesthetic standpoint? You know, those are other factors, I think, that have to be built into the evaluation as you move forward. It's not simply a cost proposition. Finally, I wanted to mention some of the next steps. And this is the first time you've seen this, or these proposals, any kind of conversation. Clearly, we don't have a lot of public with us here tonight. So the public has perhaps an opportunity to have a glimpse of these as well. And so I would recommend that the next step would be another work session. That way, you'll have time to gather questions and comments from the public. We can have the, potentially have the developers here that you can then ask in-depth questions about, since you now are much more informed, since you've had opportunity to hear from residents of the community. And that's just a much more efficient, a work session, that is a much more efficient way for you to get information as opposed to a public hearing. We'll have to have a public hearing down the line. But let's allow you time to go through these issues, comments, questions you've heard, question the developers perhaps, if you choose to do it at that time, in more detail, because you'll have time to review it and have more questions from your constituents. So I just believe that would be a next step, that would be probably preferable, and spend more time than we have tonight, probably on a work session. Just allowing for more conversation that probably will come up, because there will be people on the public who have seen this. And for those who have not seen it, that gives them another time to also see it before a public hearing. Of course, after a work session or work sessions, you can then schedule those public hearings and other meetings that are necessary and move through the process at that point in time. So I don't believe there's any reason to, I think the mayor said earlier, to move this process forward with undue haste. I know we don't want to prolong it either, but we do need to take the time that's required to look it over appropriately, and if we have to have several meetings, so be it. I believe the next one, a good work session will be the next thing, next step-wise in this process. And again, happy to answer any more questions, have conversation. We do have a couple representatives from the collaborative here. Mr. Cosby did say, if you wanted to, I could call him and ask him questions directly, but he could not be here tonight, or chose not to be here tonight because of the weather situation in the Richmond area where he's driving from and back. Questions, comments, or thoughts?
Want to echo what Leslie said, I think all these proposals are very interesting, particularly, particularly Proposal A and the Echelon proposal. And I can see a situation where we all might agree, since we need a supermajority eventually to make this decision. I mean, I would, I worry that we would, we may have difficulty coming to a supermajority in picking between these proposals. But we would all agree that we must do the sale. How would that work at the end, Mayor? I'm curious. Would we vote first to make the sale and then vote on whatever proposals, or no?
No, I'd look for support from the city manager, but the expectation would be that council will select a proposal and move forward with the contract with that, whether it's Lexington Collaborative or Echelon. And so when one is selected by council, preferably unanimously, or five to one perhaps, the next step would be then negotiating, and then the physical sale would move forward. So I guess, actually theoretically, if it was a four-two or something of that nature, to select a contractor, that doesn't have to be a unanimous decision.
I haven't looked into it in a lot of detail yet. I'd want to speak with the city attorney. But I also would say that potentially, if you believe two of the projects maybe are outstanding, and you wanted to get more information, we could go back to the proposers and ask for additional information at that point in time. You know, maybe even the level of some engineering and zoning work. You know, I suspect every, each of them wants to be, you know, responsive to city council and provide information that's helpful to the community, but there is a cost to it, of course. And so there would have to be some, if you will, conversation. But that may be an option that would then help you focus in, if you did find that a couple of projects were such that, you know, we really interested knowing more before we made that decision. Possibility consider, whoops, consider as we move forward. Chuck?
I know we just received a big pile of information, and I'm impressed with what's been put forward. Do any of the proposals have expiration dates on them? Did that come through? In the life and times we live?
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. I don't recall that. Mr. Smith, I'm afraid I don't recall that.
Other questions that council has? Given the time, I will, I know Lee's about to jump out of his chair. And so I would like to recognize, if there's anyone who'd like to speak to this or speak to council, my preference would be, you know, not lobbying, but clarifications or things of that nature. So Lee, if you want to grab the mic and step up here. And for the record, if you can state your name and address. Actually, Lee, let me get you to press the button there and do that all over again, so it can be on the audio.
Lead Arrow, 2 South Randolph Street.
Thank you.
I am a consulting architect with the collaborative, so I'm not the lead designer. Heidi will be doing the design work. I'll be assisting. And I have been involved since the initiation of the first scheme, which was the one that I think has the most interest on the part of city council. The other two schemes are simply there to try to engage city council and staff in a conversation about what kind of housing you want there. And to focus on the Scheme A, the condominium, until we said they're condominiums, because we presumed that had a better tax outcome than rentals, that we called them rentals or apartments. Those four buildings are very flexible and could be different things if that was the purposes of the community. The parking, we put in as much parking as we thought the site dealt with. We figured we could get 48 certain-story, two-bedroom units in there. We've been asked, what's your mix between one and two bedrooms and studios? And we haven't determined that, because we're trying to determine with the community, what is the mix that's most valuable? And we could change the count, the parking will always drive how many? There's been changes in the ordinance as to how many cars are required per unit. So that was highly fluid during the evolution of these designs. So all I really want to say is, we would love to have a conversation about like, well, do condos or rentals make more money for the city in terms of their tax, taxing? Does it make a better community? Which one is more vulnerable to the rush of real estate of buying up houses that people are using for, not necessarily primary residential? Those are all policy issues. They're on the table. The design of this unit can adapt to what is the consensus of what people want. And I just wanted to point that out. I'm happy to try and answer any other questions, but I am not a principal in that. But I can assure you that that flexibility exists in the development of the project at this time.
Thank you, Lee.
Any other questions, I'd be happy to.
Certainly. Does the council have any comments or response, Leslie?
Don't take this the wrong way. I'm going to make a little comment. It's, I love the idea of the flexibility and trying to work with what we need. It does concern me, because if you're building condominiums versus apartments, I mean, I assume there's a whole different financing process in a long-term business plan model. So it worries me to be too vague on what.
Well, I didn't say that without knowing that there are management companies around here that do a good job on rental, on rental management. That's a doable thing. The financing is available either way. I don't mean to undergird, and if Max was here, he'd probably kick me for showing the flexibility. I'm just trying to say that within the design thing, if we can accommodate what makes sense to everybody.
And I would say, not putting words in the mouths of council, but the discussion for some time on this parcel has been for apartments. That's been the goal, as we've been working on this particular property from the onset. Certainly, interesting to entertain and look at others. And there's some people who do think single-family would make a much better outcome than apartments. But I think Lee makes a great point. From a policy standpoint, council, listening to our community and weighing all the options and looking at what we need makes the most sense and is the most important thing for council as we progress on this to. There is no perfection of what we're trying to accomplish, but having additional housing inventory. And I think we've seen many, many times and instances over the past year where folks were specifically looking for an apartment in our community, young professionals as well as retirees, not students, which is a fear some folks have. Mr. Ziegler?
And to add to that, we can't, you know, be considering anything in a vacuum. We have to be thinking about general retreat. I mean, that has been on our docket, or the planning commission's docket, just within a year, within the last year, talking about general retreat, rebuilding, and if their number of units will expand when they're all finished. So we have to think about that, too.
Not to mention the excitement of what VDOT property, when we acquire it sometime soon, what the future of that property is. Lots of conversations and opportunities with developers there. So, Lee, thank you. I appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Or add to the conversation? Hearing none, staff have anything else they want to add or delete, or?
Nothing to add or delete, other than this mask. But I would like any guidance or suggestions noted from council that staff can provide, or staff and I can provide to you, because we will have, obviously, another occasion to get together and speak about this. So if you have thoughts tonight, you know, let me know, or sometime in the future, let me know.
Well, I would say Chuck, as Chuck indicated, there is a significant volume of information that's before us right now. We also have the circumstances you briefed council. Max, who's the lead on this, because of health reasons, wasn't able to respond to all the questions that staff had to give a full look. So I would suggest by the 28th, if council could respond with questions or concerns to the city manager with these proposals, other things that we want to see, and we'll work on scheduling another work session, perhaps before, do we have one already for February 3rd? I can't remember.
In all likelihood, we do.
But we'll work to schedule another work session to vet these a little bit more and address any questions and have additional discussion. If we're, if we don't have a tremendous amount of questions or additional, would hope that we will take up the matter of selecting a proposal as soon as practical. Again, no rush, but no need to put it off as we need to discern and find a partner to move forward with this parcel. What's Alexander?
Yes, I was wondering if we could possibly get Jen to take a look at A, and instead of it being 48 condos, look at it as 48 apartments, to see what the numbers are.
And also, I'm wondering if we should, you provide some direction. We probably don't need to, because Lee seemed to have picked up on it. But I, I mean, from my perspective, it's Proposal A from, from we're most interested in. And so to save some time, maybe focusing on that may be a good thing. I'm always speaking for myself, so I don't know where everybody else is. But that might be a best use of resources, is to focus on that proposal.
Would be interesting hearing from anyone else what they, about that. I would agree with that. I don't know about anybody else.
I agree.
I guess I would, on the other side of the coin, move away from C.
I just, you know, 336 daily trips, or whatever that number is, that's significantly higher than B or C, just to acknowledge that. And the quality of life for that part of the city, that's a neighborhood. We've heard from a lot of folks that live there. They acknowledge that there will be development. They, I mean, they do. But they want it to be respectful of the neighborhood. Folks have been asking for a four-way stop sign on Houston Street for a long time. Before we just run out of the gate and kind of commit ourselves to 336 daily trips in a busy part of town, I just would kind of like to hear from some folks and maybe hear if the city acknowledges that 336 daily trips is an imposition for that part of the city. And if there's anything the city can do to help with the traffic and the speeding on Houston Street, specifically the four-way stop sign that's been asked for for years. So I just, before we hear from anyone, I would like to not have our mind made up already. That's me.
Right, and there's a complication.
If you could pull your microphone down to, thank you.
And that's good. There is a complication as well on Nelson Street, where that spots would intersect that. It's always been a complicated, little tricky turn there because of the curve and whatnot. You know, cars are either going to go on Houston Street, or they're going to go to Nelson Street, or maybe a combination and whatnot. But I like Proposal A as well, from the ones I've seen. I would like to also further the, for clarification, on real estate turnover. You'd mentioned about real estate turnover. I think that's an important number to consider in terms of the proposal, in terms of turnover for actual sales, real estate. turnover for actual sales, real estate sales and whatnot, in there. Because if it's every, I know there's an average that's calculated around here, I don't know what it is, but maybe it's four years, maybe it's five years. And you turn over the 100% of it in, in five years, you know, overall, you know, that's a chunk of change. And further, I, I would like to have the, the public be given an opportunity sooner rather than later to start giving council, giving council feedback on, on these proposals as well. I think we need to start hearing from the public on that, and the public wasn't invited to speak tonight at a work session, but we can certainly arrange for that to happen at a next discussion session for hearing about their, the public's concerns on these proposals.
Well, I'll assure you that Janey did a great job of sending out the information about the Spotswood properties, I believe, yesterday or today, indicating that the work session is for council to sink their teeth and, and get into it. And following this, in about 10 minutes, we have a public meeting, and anyone's welcome to weigh in. This is the first blush for us to see these proposals, as well as the community, so either later in our meeting, or our February 3rd meeting, folks, the, the proper time for folks to, to come and share their thoughts and opinions on these is individually, to grocery store or other places around town, as well as at our regular council meeting in the public comment section. So we certainly do want to hear from our neighbors and constituents and find the best way forward to serve our city, which is, I know the goal of this council, with everything that they contend with. Leslie?
I'll, I'll just throw out a little differing opinion, I want everybody, I want to hear everyone's opinion, but people like less density if it's their neighbor. So I think it does help that we've at least said we're more interested in the two denser proposals and would like to go down that path. So I think that's very helpful to get the conversation started along those lines, and we can work from there. How can we make these more walkable? I mean, that's part of the beauty of this location and about having it be multifamily is, it's ideal for good pedestrian and bike access, and, and so we can work with the community on these kind of things. So I think this was a good meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, it, I would suggest two things. One, as council members speak, please lean into your microphone, because I see, see people in the audience, you know, leaning to hear what you have to say, and they do want to hear what we have to say. The other piece being, I remember when John Ellishead introduced me to the city, and I was first on council, and there were a couple people that were advocating stop signs and to remove traffic, parking downtown in particular. And John always said that he was really glad that we had the parking we have downtown, as well as on Jackson Avenue specifically, because people had to slow down and dodge cars and people, as opposed to the raceway that we have on Houston Street. So I think as we have more congestion, people will be moving slower, is a potential or counterpoint, if you will. But safety for our citizens and for our community is really our goal and objective, and having material from the engineers and Jeff Martone and the studies that they do on the different streets and locations to make sure where those stop signs need to be and, and how we need to herd our, our traffic around town, so. But like Leslie, and I hope all of you found this to be a productive, would have loved to have had the information two weeks ago, but between COVID, snow, and other obstacles, we've got it before us, we're moving forward. And again, the next step, I anticipate, is that we will, council will respond to the city manager directly, questions, issues, thoughts relative to these proposals, and as soon as practical, we'll have another work session and work towards selecting, out of respect to the people that have made these proposals, and moving forward. And just to affirm the clarity to the staff, Echelon and A from the collaborative are the primary focus, C has been recommended to be eliminated specifically, but A and Echelon's proposals as, or collaboratives proposal as a rental property, the cost benefit analysis on that is what we'll look at next, from that standpoint. Excellent. Unless there's anything else, we will stand adjourned for this work session and reconvene at 7:00 in 5 minutes. We are adjourned. Thank you.